Meeting the special meeting of town council. We are here for one purpose and that is to go through the proposed five year capital improvement plan. I will turn the meeting over to our manager Foley. He will give a presentation on the capital plan.
All right. Good afternoon, good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming to my first, hopefully of many, capital improvement. Plan meetings here at our town council. Thank you, everybody. For coming here as well, both in person and online, those who are joining. I'm going to go through the 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 plan, the five year plan here. I'll try to do it. As efficiently as possible. I have quite a team surrounding me. Should there be any questions, then I will turn to them for their areas of expertise. When needed. So. What is a capital budget? So in order for us to provide service. Oh, one second, I want to make sure we can. So in order for the town to provide services, we need. Things to do that or assets as they're called and the services we provide are many from public safety. Teaching to to keeping our roadways safe and clear and many, 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 many others that I'm leaving on here. Some of those assets include obviously our schools, our large equipment, our buildings. Our parks and technology and newer thing and oh, by the way, we own all the streets here in town as well. And all the asphalt. So. Assets must be purchased, maintained, replaced, improved on a timely basis. But most importantly, it should be done on a responsible basis. And when I say responsible, responsible to our budgeting and our debt. And in order to do that, you need a five year plan, and that's what this capital budget is. As you can see on the screen, the capital project, capital projects are many things. And they are to basically could be new buildings, could be improving buildings, it could be repairing buildings, buying and selling land, improving land. Items of a non-recurring nature that are realized over a long period of time. And this plan obviously has to reflect the life expectancy of something. And as you'll see, as we move through. This year's plan, that is not always the most friendly thing to predict without a crystal ball or. Magic eight ball and even those would probably be more accurate in predicting as you'll see things move fast. Cost, obviously, we're not putting pens and pencils and tape on here. These are things generating excess over ten thousand dollars. Next is this is the basic schedule of how this capital budget planning process has. Continued and we're pretty much in the middle of it. Hopefully ramping up towards the end of this part of our budget process. Started pretty quickly when I got to the town. I had a pretty early eye on things and throughout the process. I have been able to at least get boots on the ground and get out and get an eyeball on darn near. Everything that we needed to look at throughout this budget process and hopefully I'll be able to speak with some intelligence on. Most of the things that we're looking to do. It's a list of the many types of funds that we have, some bigger than others, most have strings attached or a lot of rules attached. All are very important to us and serve serve different needs, some very specific. And obviously, the general fund one is the is the most important that we try to protect. As much as we can. Next is for all our data friends and our budget people, the numbers and the lines. But we're going to get into it, get get into all of this in more detail and much bigger writing that you'll be able to see a little bit better. So as you know. In the town of talent, we do not have a water treatment plant or water sewage plant. So we do have some sewer systems here in town and. We have to pump our sewers to the town of Vernon, the simplest of terms. That is not free. Town of Vernon sewage treatment plant had needed a lot of a lot of upgrades to it and maintenance and. There was a plan put in place to pay for that. Our portion of that pay was around five point six three percent. But still a very expensive proposition. We've spaced out the money to pay for that. Over twenty years share. I'm happy to if I if anyone has any questions about that now, I'm happy to have Lisa answer. Does anyone have any questions specific to that very basic point? Okay. Well, let's kind of jump right in. So this year out of the general fund and we're working to. The plan is to start cutting down that number of the general fund going towards. Our water treatment facility to pay for our water treatment projects. Lisa, Lisa, do you want to explain that a little bit how we're trying to cut back on the general fund while I have you there?
Sure. Actually, it's not really to cut back on the general fund, but is to phase in. The funding of the WPC share that we need to pay to Vernon. Over the years, we have. Paid it out of the capital program and have. Used other funds along with general fund portion. We're trying to phase in the general fund portion to get up to. A little over about a hundred and sixty five thousand dollars each year. That's where it's going to level off for the next sixteen years. For that project. Once we get to that, then the town council and manager can decide. Do you want to leave this in the capital projects fund? Do you want to move it to the general fund? The general fund will continue to pay for it. But you won't have those other offsetting revenues that we've been using that we earmarked to help phase it in. So we're slowly edging up the number that the general fund is sharing for that.
All right. Thanks, Lisa. Looking at some of the stuff that in year one here, that then we're going to, we're going to move through five years. This is we'll we'll start out right here in year one. I'm sorry, I didn't explain that upfront for fiscal year twenty three. Twenty four. One of the first things, let's let's go with the board of education. I have to start with them each year. The district wide radio security upgrade. Basically. This is a. Upgrade to the radio system, the existing radio system and improvement and. You're going to hear me say this more than once. I don't particularly love discussing security needs, especially in certain types of buildings. In a public forum. That being said, this radio upgrade. If a person were to key the radio. And ask for help and I can tell you in a dynamic. Emergency situation, it's not always the easiest thing to do when people aren't always crystal clear as to. Who they are and where they are and what is happening. This will automatically tell the other people with radios in the school system. Who is saying, who who is talking on the radio and where they are. Dr. Willard, is that accurate?
Yeah, the the main limitation of the radios right now, another great radio, we have a lot of technology can activate lockdowns from anywhere. We can do all kinds of things with them, but the thing that they don't do is. It won't tell you who is sending the call. So there's been times when we really needed to know where and who this was actually coming from and we couldn't identify. So it's a pretty significant thing. I think the state police and the public safety. That was very important. So did I. And we've had two or three situations where we really needed to know that and we didn't know that.
And when he says where in some of the situations, they don't even know it's school when they hear it come in. So it's this is a basic. When when I became a cop in nineteen ninety four. You could tell who it was when you keyed the radio button, you knew who was talking and that was purely. A safety, an officer safety type of situation. So. In in my opinion, not a high price. I'm shocked at that at the cost is is not that bad to improve their current radio. Moving on. The TIS modular roof replacement now off to the side of if you're facing the building to the left, there's some modular. Buildings next to TIS and. I visited those with Dr. Willard to look at them and you'll see the pictures. After after we run through this particular slide here. Of the issues now, there is no storage of inside the middle school for what's in there. And it and it stores so much, so many things in there for the district, but also for community groups as well, including. Our, for lack of a better term, our children's theater and. The basement of the of the middle school, you know, like you could probably put something in there, but you're going to need a. Shoehorn and some WD forty to get it in and out. It's so packed in there. So there's not a lot of room for storage in our district why. That being said. I don't love the idea of this being a storage facility, but that is, I do love the idea of having. Additional class space should an emergency happen, should something happen to a section or a wing of a building, we have that that area available. And then also as should the district grow, especially with the. We expected a large apartment complex to come in with more families. Should it grow? We we have some expansion modulators. The Talon Middle School Library and Main Office Carpet. I went and looked with again with Doc Doctor Bullitt at this. And it's not as bad. It's not as good either as as you know, it could be. And but when in talking with Lisa, it comes down to how much stuff do we want to put out and in her pay thing, you know, we needed to sort of balance things out this year. Capital Equipment Projects funded by the general fund. Next, this is this is a reserve fund. Fourteen thousand eight hundred and sixty two dollars. This is a reserve fund to replace. The light duty, the light duty vehicles for the town. That being said, we're not just buying people new vehicles. When a new vehicle comes in, we use it for. Roughly, I want to say five to eight years or so, and then it trickles on down and we push it down. And so we're not, we're not singularly replacing cars. We're using all of them as much as possible while pushing them. On down the line. So we're trying to get as much out of it as we can. You'll see that occurring. Almost in the same price with minor fluctuations through throughout the five years. Moving on to public facilities and projects, security cameras and asylum alarm. In my first weeks here, I'm in right up until. Yesterday, I have gotten. I don't want to say complaints, but concerns from staff and people in the buildings regarding. People in here. So we're looking for a one button push. That'll go to directly in best case scenario to the troop or worse or and if less than that to TN to get help here as soon as possible. On top of that. If if we've been running a wholesale catalytic converter operation out of the back of our. Public our parks facility as we had had a few tests there. I don't like again discussing needs, but certainly we could use. Upgrades to our security at at the parks building. As it's wide open, as it's constructed right now. Yes, there we're going to hopefully rebuild that building next year and the cameras would move along in the project. All right. So some of the pictures. Here's the roof of the. Modular units off of TIS. And as you can see, there's some patchwork already being done. Lower left is one of the radios is going to get an improvement. That's irrelevant. You can see the patchwork, some of the patchwork that's already been done, both the little squares and the larger rectangle. But what if you look closely, you can see the actual striations in the plywood. And if if you know there if if it were a clearer picture, you can actually see in plywood. When they repair a knot in the wood, they use this like football shaped patch. And you could actually see the patch that the membranes wore thin and you can see where the the repair stuff is is much thicker. So it certainly, this is another one I talked to Lisa about pushing out and again. It came down to budgeting out all of our capital projects through the next five years and what's best. There's obviously waters, water starting to cool up or it's sagged. Obviously, that that is quite problematic for a roof. And moving on, this is our our parks garage. That's that's it from the street. As you can see, it's there's there's not a lot of security there and we obviously like to improve it. That's the backside there. And if you look off to the right there, that's Interstate eighty four and it's pretty easy to walk right down off of eighty four. Have at that building, no one, very little people would have any idea that you were there. We do park most of our vehicles inside to thwart the catalytic converter. That as you can see, they got them packed in there. Pretty tight as best they can. Not all our all our our equipment gets in there. We're looking for bigger space down the road, I believe, but that's that's to show you that. They are trying to pack these vehicles in there. Obviously, time consuming at the end of the night as well. Okay, this this again is the. Depreciation amount for the replacement of light duty vehicles funded by the general fund. These are town vehicles and board of ed vehicles. These cover ten town vehicles and three board of ed vehicles. Again, five to seven years or so before the vehicles are passed down to the next level and a new one comes in. Also, again, on the general fund. All right, let's move into two some capital projects funded by other sources and this is a board of ed projects. Out of CNRE and. I'll start with the TIS security entrance, security upgrade. Again. I don't love talking about security weaknesses. Especially in certain types of buildings in a in a public setting. That being said. The most basic of entrance upgrades could be used here and in extensive experience. In walking into all the schools. For the last. Fifty years or so, this one certainly could is at the top of the list for needing up an improvement. Moving on, the THS stage audio replacement. Some of us here had the pleasure of going to Tom High School the other night for orientation for eighth graders going into ninth graders. Thank you very much, Dr. Willard. It was. Fantastic. I had the the experience of seeing what they were currently using for the stage audio and it was basically a. A speaker of the Bluetooth type of speaker situation because the audio. In the auditorium has been outdated and and the. F there's issues with the FCC and the radio frequencies that are used and they can't even replace it anymore. There's serious moving on to serious irrigation issues at the Talon High School, but. Again, a refurbish to some of the components should should improve that and that's what the twelve thousand one hundred is for there. Moving on, ARPA funds for Board of Education. So the TIS and TMS seclusion rooms, there's there unfortunately are cases where students need to be put in a seclusion room. And I have some experience in this. As a student, but as a professional in these types of rooms and immediately walking in when Dr. Willard showed me these rooms. I saw immediate concerns, immediate concerns for. Affixiation, I'll call it that, concerns for damage. Drop ceiling. Among other things, cameras that could certainly be punched right off the the ceiling as well. So. Absolutely in need of upgrades. TIS, the nurses station, and yet again, both of these two, the 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 seclusion rooms and the nurses stations, these are have already gone through or at least our ARPA. Our 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 committee commission. And for did we get into council yet? No, not yet. The TIS nurses station renovation. So it's very problematic. The way it's the way it's currently constructed. And the the again, not getting into security issues, but. There could be one major security improvement there for not a lot of money, but it would also serve. For when students are sick, there's a. An isolation room for them. In order for them to get in the isolation room, the way it's constructed now, they have to walk through the nurses station, the office. And basically through everybody to get there. And when a youngster has a stomach bug or otherwise. That can be unpleasant for a lot more people than need be one simple doorway, among other things, should assuage that. Staying with capital projects funded with other sources, capital equipment. Looking to replace. Truck two, two thousand and six F two fifty truck. That that is estimated at about fifty thousand that will come out of the cemetery fund. The we can then I'll have pictures of this stuff in a moment. Also replacing two thousand and eight large dump plow truck number fourteen assigned to highway. That one has been. That one has been planned to be paid for by ARPA, also has not yet come across council's desk, but I had a feeling that. Not this Tuesday, but the following Tuesday, there'll be some other stuff getting punched through. Moving on, the ambulance reserve fund. Managed very well by our chief, replacement of firefighter protective gear at twenty five thousand dollars. It was previously in the budget for seventeen and change. Since I got here six months ago, supply chain inflation, nothing has come in at cost. That we've attempted to purchase and we've been under on everything. So with that, we've been inflating roughly fifteen to twenty percent. So that we're not again being grossly under when we request this money. Also, on the ambulance reserve fund, the refurbishment of tanker. One forty, that's an O three. Now, the issue. And if you follow my town manager page, the issue with with firefighting in talent is there are not a lot of hydrants. Once you get off the main roadway here in town and the distal neighborhoods and homes. So water's not there when you get there. So you have to bring water to the fight and that is done mainly through tankers and the tankers have about a thousand gallons. These full tankers have about three thousand gallons. As you can imagine, when a tanker sits around on a house and up on a firehouse. With three thousand gallons of water on it, that puts a lot of pressure on the spring suspension and tires. And and obviously, they that means refurbishment. An O three, we don't need to replace, but it's time that we. Give it give this one here an upgrade to again, the springs, the tires and the the. Anything that the weight would have an effect on. Is that accurate? Chief Lighton? Yes, sir. Thank you. Moving on, okay. Aside from the less than camera side guy in the cab of the truck there. Obviously, a lot of rust on this oh oh six Ford F two fifty. On the bumper is is it's that's almost gone. So it's not even much of a bumper anymore. A lot of body rock there as well as it started to obviously come away from. Brain. Moving on. All right, you're starting to see a lot of flake. Rusting and it's not, it's not goes beyond surface rust when you start to see the actual flaking, it becomes a structural issue. That's that's the rear dump bed. See it on the side, it's starting to rot away as well. Then moving underneath. You can see some of the the I've been actually up top there too. You can see some of the larger rust issues that are occurring. I would pause there and say that. When I got here, I I was able to. Look at a consultant report for the fire department and it gives us a. Pretty good balance of where we are and where we need to be with with apparatus. I did not have that for the Department of Public Works and their apparatus. That has been secured and Mike, where are we with that right now?
We just need to start to gather some information.
So we've already signed them, right?
Yeah, we have the contract. I haven't actually had to sign it, but I have it.
Okay, so we're we're right there with them. I saw an email today on it between Mike and and the consultant. And it's well defined to the apparatus. We already had a consultant report done. Say fifteen years or so, maybe a little bit longer. On staffing, on the needs of the town. I'm not looking for another one of those. That consultant report was incredibly. Light of anything and recommendations to trucks and apparatus that we need. So hopefully this will this will define that out. Once I have that in hand, then we can start planning out. How many we need replacements? Should we should we sell some? Do we need more? So those are the types of things that I want to look at. We got a, we did get a report of DPW, our DPW as compared to Wellington and Hellington recently. And I was not to not to besmirch their DBWs, but ours does very well when you consider the size of our DPW. Workforce compared against the miles of road. Miles of footage or yardage of sidewalks, number of fields. Size of the town. So many things were taken into consideration. So I was I was. Pleasantly relieved to see that how hard our guys are working. Moving on. So let's look at some things funded again, but still by other sources. This is a low SIP, our public facilities, low SIP, the arts building. You'll see a picture in a moment. That came in at thirty thousand. Last year, we had a price much higher. I think I'm glad that Director Lappin was able to get another estimate in much lower, much lower. So that's at thirty thousand. Up at the old Stafford Road Transfer Station, moving on, there's a shed, the the storage shed. And it's a mess and. I believe we had an OSHA issue up there as well. This is not to replace it, it's just to skin it. And when I say skin it, pull off the the rotting plywood and such that's on it now. Throw up some T one eleven. Was that you're going to use?
We're gonna, yeah, we're gonna put siding on it, final siding.
Okay.
To give it to weather.
So a little more permanency and then a roof on it. Right now, it houses all sorts of things, including. A lot of extra garbage storage bins and some equipment. However. Megan is moving along with the solar projects at the dump. Should there be a solar field up there? Obviously, there's going to be opportunity to store. Some things in there for us as well. So hence the the importance, I believe, in that project. Moving on. CNRE funds being used for a generator at the highway garage. Highway Garage is our main source of fuel for our vehicles and 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 that includes first responder, our ambulance and and fire apparatus. As well as the trucks. Should power go down, we do not have a way of pumping. Gas there. So this that that is the main reason, but there's others, obviously, if should power outage be at be down, we want the highway garage up and running. We would like a generator at the. Parks and Facilities Garage. And this is, this one was cleverly obtained from Birch Grove. When they rebuilt Birch Grove, we saved the generator. But as we got a retrofit it to the Parks Facilities Garage, that would be roughly twenty thousand dollars. Moving on, we intend to use ARPA funds for the jail museum renovations and ADA ramp. The currently as it's constructed, there is an ADA ramp there, but it is does not provide the greatest of access to the building. In fact, it provides questionable access. To the building is we went out and Mrs. Bach was kind enough to show. Bev and I and Megan around the facility and and the needs of of the ramp. So let's take a look at the pictures of some of the things on this previous page. That is the roof of the arts building that we're looking to replace. That, those who know anything about roofing, is three tab shingles. I don't even know if they make three tab shingles anymore. It's it looks like it's starting to swell, obviously covered in moss. Yes, we could wash the moss off, but with shingles that old, you start to wash the shingles off as well too. So it's it's certainly time. The Arts Building was kind enough to raise funds and replace the lighting this week. It looks spectacular in there and they did that on their own. With the assistance of Director Lappin and Jim and buildings to make sure everything was up to code. And it looks great. And so I in my. Use expanded use of the green, I'd like to see more events there. I'm already in talks of Mr. Wyman about overlapping our. Farmers market with events at the art center as well through his group. And him having events there or or however else they they see fit. He accused me of wanting it just for the bathroom. I said, that's not accurate, but that's a great idea. Thank you for reminding me, Mr. White. Moving on, there's our shed up the old, probably most of you probably not even seen that. That's the shed up of the old building. Instead of going to the next one, you can see there's actually holes in the. Down there, you can get in there and around back. It's even worse. I couldn't even get back there with the crickers and everything else. But it's but it's 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 certainly a need and so they're going to, they're going to try to save it. The 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 actual, is that pressure treated studs inside there, I believe, Scott, if I remember correctly? Yeah, so you know, the bones are pretty good in there. And yes, I walked around there, they are pretty decent. Moving along to the ADA walkway, there's a there's a ramp to the back door. Of the facility. The the on the left, the brick side, there's a ramp in there, although. Questionable whether it's meets the ADA standards as constructed now, number one, and it only gets us to half the museum. The other entrances to the back door or the office of the museum and again, you know, it's a tight fit getting in there. What they want to do is get a ADA ramp in the front door. After all, the action is and I couldn't agree more. The picture doesn't do it justice, but the you can see some sag right there. In the ramp as it is and and some of the the piling is now below or crooked and failing. What's time on that? So we do seventy, we spend seventy thousand dollars a year through our tar grant for tree trimming. That's the the elimination of hazardous trees on town property due to damage. That's the the elimination of hazardous trees on town property due to damage or insect uh infestation. Uh the streets and roads. Grading construction, we have forty nine thousand coming out of the TAR grant. And pavement management, two hundred and seventy nine, again, the the TAR grant plus uh Losip. And the road improvements, eight hundred and twenty thousand, uh as part of the five million dollar uh bond funding approval from November two thousand and eighteen, I know. Uh councilperson, Mary, you had some uh questions and and. Uh Lisa, if you're ready, uh do you want to pause here, Lisa, and kind of explain some of that?
Sure, I'd be happy to.
Go ahead.
Our public works department can only take on so much every year doing road improvements. And on average, we've done plus or minus close to a million dollars per year. When we issued the five million dollar bond back in November of eighteen. The goal was to try to still maintain doing at least a million dollars a year between issuing debt. As well as what we can get from town aid road and Losip to get it up to that million plus dollars. So that's what you're seeing here to to get to that number. By doing that, it allowed us to extend the value of the five million dollar approval. To get some extra years within the program for the the road improvements.
Any questions?
Yeah.
If you follow.
How many years? How 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 much of an extension do we have?
I don't have the book with me. It's, it gave us a couple more years added. To where it normally would have been about five years. I think we got six or seven by pushing it out. Maybe it was six years.
So we're not, it's, but it's only. Uh fiscal year twenty four and twenty five that we're talking about, less than a million dollars, right? The previous fiscal years were all a million dollars?
Um they were either a million or a little bit higher. And twenty three, twenty four is um. That's a little over a ma- uh million dollars there.
Right, we're talking about eight twenty for fiscal year twenty four. And I think seven.
Twenty three, twenty four.
Yeah, and seven ninety for fiscal year twenty four, twenty five.
But there's also town aid funds and Losip grants that will be added to that, which will bring it up to a million plus.
My um. Thank you for explaining that. The uh under or the underlying intent of this question is, are we. Adequately funding road improvements to meet the needs of. Are this the road situation in town?
I think that would be something that Scott could answer. I know we do have a program. That assesses all the needs and to actually administer that entire program. Would cost far more than a million dollars a year. You'd have to have the staffing and the ability to manage those projects. If if we did have more than a million dollars per year, but I think Scott Lappin is probably the best person to address that question.
So that's kind of the issue is, we can do more, but we need more staff to start pushing it out. Go ahead, Scott, do you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, I mean, along with the resurfacing. There's all of the catch basins. This year, there's approximately eighty five catch basins. They have to be, the tops are replaced at a bare minimum, then we go through them, some are missing bottoms, some have a lot of work that has to be done. Um our staff cannot handle all that, so we try to subcontract some of that out. But then there's the curving, if if the roads, you know, especially in the neighborhood, you have curving. I have to backfill the curving with foam. See, that's the kind of stuff that we do. Where the actual placing of the pavement and reclamation, stuff like that is outsourced. Uh the program that Lisa was referring to was done by BHP, an engineering firm. They give us a five-year plan, and that's what it is, a plan. There are some years where we pump some up, push some back. Um depending on how bad it has been for them, whether they're uh eliminating more. The goal is to have every road in town meet a PCI, which is Payment Condition Index of seventy. We still have roads in town that are down around forty five, fifty. Um it's gonna take a while. We we figure we're gonna need at least one more. Uh five-year, five million dollar bond to. Um you know, achieve that. Might be a little more, just because price of everything is obviously going up.
So, thank you, that was really great information, and I just want to circle back. Is the funding that is proposed in this capital budget. For fiscal years twenty three, twenty four, and twenty four, twenty five. Sufficient to meet your five-year plan?
At this point, I would say yes, we have, you know, we have a plan for this coming year, which is gonna be right around that million dollar mark. Um it gives us, I believe, six and a half miles of road, which is significant. You know, because that's thirteen miles of curving, and that's, you know, like you say, a whole sketch basin, so. It'll be uh quite a project to do it on this year.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thanks.
All right. Uh good. All right, thank you, Lisa and Director Lappin. All right, let's move into um year two. Uh again, you'll see uh the um. Water pollution and control, our sewage uh money to pay for that, the the town of Vernon. Uh new, and this is new, you might not have it in your package, um as this, our our shared IT services with the town of South Windsor. Uh they didn't get it to us until late, but they recommend that our servers be replaced. Um at at least every five years, we are um coming up on year five. Obviously, we have a server and a backup server, uh and uh that is roughly fifty thousand dollars. Out of the general fund. Uh Lisa, do you have anything else to add? These were purchased, I'm sorry, in twenty twenty. Lisa, do you have anything else to add?
No, um I have nothing. This is, this is what runs our town. This is what has our financial systems. Um email, everything, and uh we have the merit servers. Uh in two different locations that if one should go down, the other picks up as if nothing had happened. Now, both go down, we have a big issue, but um this is the heart of our operations for technology.
And to this point, South Windsor's been um quite a shepherd in uh helping us manage attacks. Uh we've been attacked and and we've done well, uh knock on wood, uh through that. Moving on, our light duty replacements, again, this is gonna be somewhat similar throughout the uh five-year plan with the town, the Board of Ed and Public Works. The uh Board of Education, uh the general fund, they, you, if you're facing the old, old high school, now middle school. To the right, over by the cafeteria, there's a large patio that's concrete. It's tore up pretty darn good, and it's gonna need um replacement. If you go up there, uh there's areas where the concrete's turned to gravel, there's areas uh where you can see over the years have. Received different stages of uh repairs, so uh. Certainly on the schedule of of things that need to need to be done. Uh bonded equipment, uh year two, one hundred and seventy five thousand dollars of non-referendum uh debt. And this is going towards uh three things. A two thousand and eight Mack uh snow truck, a snow and dump truck, uh I believe that's not the full size, but close. Uh I could be wrong. What size is that?
Uh it is full size, it's just being refurbished, the cabin chassis are good.
That's it.
And it's the body and uh some of the uh infrastructure, the plumbing, hydraulic plumbing and stuff.
That's a reverb, and then a grader that is for our unpaved roads, which we have. Uh these steps, eight, eight point three miles of unpaved roads in town, and that's a machine used to smooth them out as um. As we got an email this week, that's uh down by the sniff, they need uh they need the the road graded down there and. And we have people that are speeding on it too, so um. Obviously, a grader would help us get that stuff done. Do we have a grader now, Scott?
Uh we have one that hasn't moved in twenty years.
Okay, and so you contracted.
We contract that out every year, and that costs us approximately twenty six thousand dollars a year. They haven't committed once to regrade our roads, so. Two years ago, we had all that rain and um Johnson Road got washed out along with the other ones. We were doing it all with a um loader, a payload of backlading, because we didn't, we don't have a grader.
So this would pay for uh itself against uh hiring a contractor. And also provide us the ability to do spot repairs, um like as we received an email today. Um in to be able to go out and repair things. We're looking to replace uh truck eighty one, this is a uh oh six F two fifty. Uh that is at forty eight thousand from CNRE. Uh an infield scarifier, this is for all our um our baseball fields. Scott, you want to explain what that does?
That's that's uh piece of equipment that we use when we go out and we um scarify the infield. And it it levels out the playing surface at the same time. We have uh such a demand for all these different baseball fields that. We have one now, if we have a second one, it's gonna, it's gonna help us um achieve getting them all kind of uh. A quicker amount of time.
So there's also a call to to start replacing fields as well. This room helps uh prolong the life. The uh, we're looking for a BenTrak tractor, uh general, again, general fund, forty nine thousand. I anticipate an increase in um. So BenTrak is a, is a, let me pause, BenTrak's a very uh multi-purpose. Type of tractor that can do all sorts of different things, depending on what attachments uh you put on it. But we mainly, or one of the main things we use it for is clearing of sidewalks, among other things. Uh we have one uh now that's obviously uh being overused, but we, I do expect a lot more sidewalk. Um very close to us within the next year or two here, that would certainly help uh with that. Is that an additional one, or you replace the BenTrak, I believe it's an additional, right?
Yeah, it'd be an additional.
Yep. Uh an equipment trailer, this is for moving heavy equipment uh around town, uh obviously, forty five thousand general fund. And then the replacement of truck thirty two, two thousand thirteen, a dump, and wow, that's a little full-size large that we were considering with ARPA. Um but again, some of the stuff, some of the things on this current year two plan um could be subject to change. Pending the consultant report uh that I have coming, so um it could be worse, it could be better, uh so again. This is just an estimation and things change, and so that's why we have to plan out uh the replacement. This is the best we can do at this point. Moving on in year two, uh replacement of nineteen ninety-three engine tank four forty. We have that at uh one point two coming in, uh that may be adjusted, we'll see. Um we also have a water tanker, two thousand and three water tanker, that's gonna need, again, refurbishing. Uh an O three refurbishments is at at a twenty-year-old um tanker, that's uh. Not a bad deal, we got some good life out of that, and a nineteen ninety-three uh engine tanker gets a good life out of that as well. Um both would be be um consistent with the recommendations. Um from our um consultant in relation to the public safety apparatus. Um I'm sure John and I will spar over the amounts and what's what to spend on that. Uh but obviously, uh not to the effect of uh public safety within our town. Moving on to Parks and Facilities Garage, you saw the pictures of the garage before, the inside um. I I wish I'd got a picture of another angle that our garage is old. Um the brake area is, you know, right above all the machines and everything, it's it's. It it it's time, uh and and it's outgrown, I mean, we've outgrown it. Scott, do you have anything else to add to that?
Just say, you know, as you say, the brake area, it's it's elevated, so when somebody's in it with a vehicle running. Voms are all going up, uh these guys have no place to go. Uh when they're in for an all-night storm, they typically go over to the rec department. Set up cots and one of the room and uh try to get a little rest of the night over there where this new building. We have some more creature comforts to it, where they could actually have a place similar to what the highway garage has now that that's been upgraded.
Moving on, tree trimming, um we're looking at seventy thousand uh out of that TAR grant, we'll see that basically uniform uh every year. Uh as well as the uh drainage, construction, design, the pavement management, give or take. Uh some uh funding here and there based on Lisa's plan. Moving on to year three. Um again, the water pollution remains consistent, I'm just, when I say water pollution, I mean the uh. Sewer pavement remains consistent, as does the light duty replacement uh vehicle uh preserve fund. Uh. Year three, this is a uh multi-board event project uh that would likely have to go to um referendum. Uh looking at four point four from referendum, and school ran a two point two for six point six million. This is to replace the roof at THS, or TH, Talon High School. I did not get up and look at the roof as of yet. Uh the track, uh would look at replacing that, I do believe, as I, as um. I went out with Dr. Will and his staff to look at the um turf field. Uh as well as the track, um I do believe the track is ahead of the turf field and needing of uh replacement. At the, basically at this finish line, there's a visible bump from about thirty yards out, you can, you can start to see it. Uh there, and 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 certainly there's been repairs done there, uh but. It's the the three years from now, I think it's gonna uh be just about it, but just about needing um. Replacement, now there's resurfacing that can be done and has been done. Is that accurate, Doctor? Well, didn't, didn't you already say it's been, it's been painted over basically um a few times, so it uh it's certain, I run that. Often, and and while it's it's decent, they're certainly better out there. Uh while we're in the neighborhood, the um and we'll get to it later, we pushed out the um turf field discussions with Lisa as to when the best. Um fun in doing that, um I met uh Dr. Will and his staff out to look at the turf field. Uh and in in um his honesty, he said immediately, you know, we can, we can definitely get. Uh at least another year or more out of, out of the uh field, as there was uh, you know, really nothing openly bad about it. I can say through my life's experience that I attend a lot of uh high school football games, both in uh Talon and in the region. With plenty of uh nephews at area high schools, uh Talon's field looks um head and shoulders as as today, as of today. Above um many of the other fields. Um this also includes technology upgrades, photography, um the seats at the auditorium, and Dr. Will had showed me the seats at the auditorium. Um are they the originals?
Yeah.
One of the building, when was the auditorium built? Were you there, Tammy?
Oh, I had the. I'm not that. Yeah, the. Older than me. You have an auditorium too.
What's that?
They found a war movie in the middle school a few years ago.
They said that was his, that was my middle school, that was.
It's a high school.
Based on my grade.
I was literally picking out the scenes going, yeah, that's my locker.
So the seats are in, they've been there forever, um and um and it's time, there are a lot of them. The thing is, you can't replace, you can't patch them anymore, you can't pull certain ones out, they're just so old, they don't, they don't make those anymore, and so it need, would need a full. Replacement. One of my first questions to Dr. Will is why don't we just replace one seat at a time here?
Uh originally nineteen eighty-three.
And I, that's certain nineteen eighty-three.
So, yeah, you were there.
That's in middle school, I think.
You're older than me.
Uh that's, Lisa's got that twice into the record. All right, that's so, um and then the Talon High School stage. Uh lighting, uh Dr. Will, would you like to expand on any of these uh that I have?
Yeah, regardless, there's questions.
Okay. Moving on, um capital equipment, uh year three, uh bonded equipment, uh three hundred and fifty seven thousand dollars non-referendum, this is for a lot of things. Uh most notably a roadside mower, that's the um, that's the thing that drives along, it's that and cuts. The um growth of shrubbery and invasive plants and such along the roadway. Uh this is a safety issue, I was sure many of you have been in intersections and the growth is up over the interception. And um you hope that someone comes and cuts it down. This, I believe, would be a lot faster than the style than the one we have now, is that accurate?
Yes, this one has the uh the over the guard rail.
Yeah.
Boom. Um which will make it much more uh flexible as far as areas asked to cut.
Faster and accurate um uh to use. A new chipper and to replace a two thousand twelve uh F two fifty uh pickup truck. I I want to mention that every, basically every truck that they have. Uh also comes uh with a snowplow on the front end of it as well. Is that accurate, Director Lappin?
Yes.
Uh and then replace um one of the John. Your crackers, that will be done on a cemetery fund for uh forty eight thousand dollars. Year three continued. All right, so a big one is this um ladder truck. Uh, and and you know, Chief I tell will tell you how painful it is to listen to me be uh, extra uh. Frugal when it comes to replacing of trucks, but this ladder truck. This ladder truck. Um, I don't like, again, the water in the ladder truck. I don't like playing games with. Now, here's we, here's the thing with the ladder truck. Um, you know, and and naively, as a resident of Taland, I say, what the heck do we need a ladder truck for? We, we are building code only goes up. I think three fours if I had to be uh, I found. I believe I'm accurate with that. Our ladder truck, it's not the up uh, so much. It's the out and extending out um, from the truck and over things. Um, if you were here the day. Uh, we had a lightning strike at the school. They're able to get that ladder up and over and out onto the roof uh, of the school or anywhere else, be it a field or wherever. Um, and and a tap from the top and pun and send water down, so uh. The second part that I think our residents should know. Is that a ladder has to be safety rated or tested for its strength and integrity. Um, and at a nineteen ninety-one, that integrity is gonna start to fail. And uh, to, hmm, hmm. We need to start, uh, we need to consider that that is, that is predictable, but that is going to happen and we should uh, replace it. Um, replacement of safety gear. Uh, for the ambulance fund, uh, you know, I I didn't say it before, uh, I will. Uh, wrestle with Chief White Tell over the apparatus all day long, but to the safety gear uh, for our volunteers, I will, I will not um. I will not butt right at all on that. It's like, they have to be kept uh, safe and it's getting harder and harder to get our. Um, pay the unsafety people uh, to become fired, believe it or not. Moving on, public facilities, um, cleaning stage, stain the exterior lodge. I have a picture after this. Uh. It, that seems like a lot, but it's not painting, it's staining. One, uh, two. You'll, when, when you look at the pictures, I want you to look at the the structure above the roof line, the way it was designed and the amount of decking and railing. Uh, on that building as well, that is gonna need to be um, stained as well and and. Uh, it's, it's certainly getting near the point where it needs to be obviously um, retreated. Senior center underground oil tank, it's reaches life expectancy. That is a fiberglass underground tank. Uh, the, and Hicks building uh, windows and doors. We, we want to do uh, fifty thousand on a low set. Obviously, there'd be some energy savings. Uh, hopefully with some better, more efficiency as well. Moving into the tree trimming, again, uniform seventy thousand dollars on the tar grants and the drainage and the pavement, the road improvements um, will remain somewhat consistent. There's your lodge. As you can see, there's um. It's a lot to stain and um, the the decking. I wouldn't want, I wouldn't want to be involved, but um, that that's a lot and and it's getting near time. Um, stain doesn't peel like paint, but it loses its protection value, uh, not visible to the uh, naked eye. Until the wood starts to rot. All right, um. Moving into year four, consistent with the um, or our sewage. Uh, with the town of Vernon and as well as our uh, vehicle reserve fund. Uh, looking at the Board of Education, uh, out of the general fund, we're replacing the stage floor, I believe, at the high school. Is that accurate, Dr. Will? Yeah, I should have put high school on, I'm sorry. And then you're looking at uh, they're looking to do overall locker replacement at T M S and T I S. Uh, to the tune of uh, eighty thousand per stool, one sixty total, not non-referendum debt. Uh, capital equipment, we're looking to replace it in in four years of two thousand and eight, uh, G M C plow dump um, at two seventy-five. That's a large full size. And the replacement of our oh-seven loader, bucket loader, that's for most of our uh, construction jobs. Uh, at two seventy-five as well. Both of those non-referendum debt. Uh, utility trailers, um. There's uh, is it two of them, John?
Yes, there are.
Two trailers, thirty-five each, basically. From the ambulance fund, um. John uses the trailers for all sorts of stuff, um, be it. Public safety, be it training. Be it at the town bonfire, um, be it getting our food. To the, 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 senior center, uh, that sort of thing. Uh, so it's, it's, it's two trailers, uh, replacing. They were, they were originally donated. Uh, replacement of an oh-eight uh, U T V uh, for off-road access. Uh, that's for anything. We obviously have a ton of trails and um, farmland and everything else here in this town. Uh, that is not easily accessed by our ambulance. Or fire truck for that. And then replacement of E T two forty. Again, I expect that, one of the two numbers, either the prior, previous one or that one, um, that those numbers to come down, that is. Not including inflation. I say that now, who knows with um, in what our economy will be like in four years. Uh, Parks and Rec, the pickleball courts. Uh, I, I, you know, giving my, my preference, I'd love to move that up in ARPA, but I, well, ARPA is probably gonna be running thin soon. Uh, at any rate, um, we all know the pickleball is getting very, very, very popular. I get calls on it all the time. They play it all very well. Um, and so I I obviously keep, I think it's important to keep that in there. You can see that's where we parked the um, artificial turp replacement. Uh, the good doctor might disagree. Four years is, I might think it's too long, but uh, that's where we have it sitting uh, for now. Uh. The public works, replacing of the fuel dispensing system, um, if any of you will have worked for the state or anywhere else you. Um, when you take a, a town car or a state car or something to a gas pump. This is the system that tracks the car who's using it, you know, and into your mileage and and um. That's or how old, how old is the system now?
It's gotta be eighteen, nineteen years old. I mean, we can't get, it's harder and harder to park it for the physical pumping, so. Um, when we have problems with the computer part, we have to call a contractor in there, meaning the jumpstart get going in for us, but. It's on its way out.
Uh, so it makes sense. Again, then not, again, the tar grant. The drainage pavement road improvements, again, all fairly similar. Moving on to year five, um. Same with the sewage and the vehicle reserve funds. Uh, the articulating lift was moved out to uh, year five. Uh, the. Much like the locker replacement, we're looking at cafeteria replacement tables, um. For year five and it had the cost of T H S and T M S. At a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars, basically, uh, and the tables are uh, pretty old, Doc. You know how old they are off the top of your head?
More than five.
Yeah, I actually. What's that?
In my time on town council, we, we did T I S. I thought we did more than that.
This is the, they were pushed out to the last year, though, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
They had, they've got repairs in two thousand seventeen. The springs were all repaired out of here. Yep. The tables will be twenty-three to twenty-four years old. Um, and then at the end of their useful lives, um, when this occurs. And then uh, moving on, the replacement of the Talon High School boiler as it comes to the, again, we're trying to predict the end of life here. Um, and that's where uh. Dr. Will and his staff have this uh, placed and planned. Capital equipment, um. And five years out, replacement of oh-nine international, big plow dump. Two hundred and forty-five thousand, again, non-referendum debt. And then two thousand and, uh, also a two thousand fifteen cat back home at uh. Two thou, or two hundred and fifty thousand. Public safety, uh, Chief White Tell is gonna love to replace um, ambulance six forty. That would be three eighty-five out of the ambulance reserve fund. Uh. This, this uh, new multi-purpose athletic field, I talked to Bruce about, um. We may look to in, in five years. That, that came as a recommendation out of the Parks and Rec board, and that would be over by the um, cemetery office site or. Uh, there's some area over there for deals. Uh, Bruce and I, in our discussions, think that money would better all spent at a um. Replacing the building at Crandall's and some of the area over there, maybe a splash pad or something along those lines. In that area would be much more useful than. Uh, a distal athletic field by itself or by um, the cemetery. Uh, but that's the way it was, it was written in, we had changed, but we'll look to adjust that next year. Uh, L E D lighting at Crandall speaks for itself. The lighting uh, was replaced a while ago, uh, but it's the old uh, regular incandescent lighting. And obviously, um, expensive, uh, with the cost of electricity too these days. And then uh, tree trimming, drainage, pavement and road improvements, all uh, fairly consistent. Uh, moving on for, for your um. Reading is the, basically the replacement plan for most of the D P W apparatus, and this will come in uh, handy and sure with a consultant. Uh, the red uh, is base, basically, we, the, the, the most important thing here is the red is beyond, means it's beyond its predicted life. Um. And a lot of the, 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 the trucks that you see in our plan uh, this year. Were not in last year as they weren't assumed to be needing to be replaced, but by their own failures have. Moved themselves up on their replacement uh, schedule and that, and uh, that's with a lot of the equipment. Again, moving through, again, the red is well beyond its life. And if you look at the um, the equipment. We're doing pretty good in, in the getting a lot of extra years out of our um, out of our equipment. Moving on, this is all John's apparatus, um. You know, we are working uh, together and closely on all of this as we've gone over extensively uh, as a council. All right, um. This is the uh, last five years, next is the last five years um, of our general fund capital contributions. Uh, and if you look uh, this year, we're up to three nineteen. This is mainly because of our um, W P C A, the sewage. Uh, Lisa, do you want to add anything here?
No, I mean, it, we have had to bump up the uh. A portion provided from the general fund mainly because of that. Uh, Vernon plant, um, that, like I said, it, it had to get up to at least a hundred and sixty-five thousand. And at some point that maybe can be moved to the general fund, so. I think it's year three or four in your plan where we start counting in a hundred percent. So that's why. The numbers have jumped so high over the past few years. For, for the most part.
Thank you. Uh, moving on, that's a pie chart. If you're interested, basically of everything we just went through, um, done by uh, program area. You can see the beef of that is the streets and roads and pavement management is, is incredibly. Um, expensive followed uh, by public facilities, followed not, not so closely by public facilities. Okay, um, we're gonna move to the debt management plan schedule. Uh, through twenty-three, twenty-four, right through to twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and for that. Um, I'm gonna hand it off to Lisa as well as uh, um. Uh, our financial advisor as well. So Lisa, go ahead. Thank you.
Sure, um, the impact of much of the debt that has been recommended within the plan. Has been built into our debt management plan. In most towns. The impact on debt for a uh. Twenty to twenty-eight million dollar debt issue would be much higher than a fifty thousand dollar increase. But the way we organize our debt management plan, we try to ease the burden. On, on the grand list, um, not the grand list, on the, on the mill rate. By the way we manage our, our plan. So as you will see here, um, we are going to be increasing the budget by fifty thousand dollars and then it will stay stable. Through fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. Uh, uh, four million, seven hundred and fifty thousand. And you will also see, if you look at our debt management plan in twenty-three, twenty-four. The actual debt cost is over five point two million dollars. Where we're only budgeting four point seven. The, the way I have um. Plan to pay for the balance of this has to do with how we funded the debt service fund that we set up several years ago that the town council approved through an ordinance. So we will be taking the four point seven million from the. General fund budget, and then we will also take the four hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollar shortfall. And pay the differential from the debt service fund. The debt service fund is arranged in such a way so that. As um, as we have um, premiums from bond sales, things like that, we've accumulated funds. Within that plan, so now we can use them to try to ease the burden on the mill rate. So you'll see for the next three years through twenty-five, twenty-six, that the um, budget will remain stable at four point seven million, five fifty thousand. After that point, we are going to have a significant amount of debt starting to fall off the books. And it'll start rapidly falling off the books after that. And that, that includes everything that we have recommended in this plan this evening, yeah, in the capital plan. At that point, my recommendation to town council is now to look at, okay, where are we at? Do we want to reduce that four million, seven hundred and fifty thousand? I just threw a number in here of four point five million, just as a conversation piece. Do um. Do we want to let it start accumulating now in the capital and non-recurring fund? And start building up funds for more pay as you go rather than issuing debt in the future. That, that has been our goal. For the last ten years of trying to do something like that, but we were never at a point where we were able to. Have enough debt falling off the books. We're getting there, getting there much quicker than we were ten years ago. So with that in mind, that's the presentation you see here for uh, twenty-seven, twenty-eight. We'd be adding seven hundred thousand if you happen to have reduced the debt in the general fund to. To four point five million. Certainly, that's a discussion point. When we get to those years and the budgetary process as to how much you want to um, alleviate the, the mill rate. For the impact on the mill rate for debt or, you know, funding for pay as you go. You may want to leave it at four point seven million. It, it all depends on the future needs of the town. In, in the past. Eleven years that I've been with the town. We have addressed a lot of our capital needs over that time. Certainly, there, there will be other capital needs coming in the future regarding heavy equipment, things like that. But a lot of our facilities. Um, we've put a, a very large investment in and hopefully those will carry on for many years. Um, does anyone have any question on this before I turn it over to Barry Bernabi, our financial advisor? Okay, well, with us this evening is Barry Bernabi. He's. Our financial, excuse me, our financial advisor for the town, and he has a presentation just to kind of. Uh, go over our debt management plan with. Barrett?
Uh, good evening. Thank you, Lisa. Um, good evening, everybody. Uh, Lisa, that, that was a great summary, and I think Lisa touched on a very important point. I mean. If you look at this page up on the screen, the town's looking at over twenty-five million dollars uh, for capital projects over the next five years. And when you think about that, um, you would think it'd be more, at least I, I would think there would be more of a impact on the town's budget. But um, a lot of that was mitigated not only by the. Uh, aggressive amortization of the town's existing debt service. But uh, Lisa's uh, creativity with that debt service fund. To help mitigate uh, the impact by actually, as her previous charges showed. Um, even though your actual debt is higher, the debt service fund helps to, to mitigate it. So, so that, that's a great idea. Surprised I don't see that more in other communities. So uh, here, here on this page, you see that um. Uh, the years that the, that the town needs to issue debt. And um, we issue a series of what are called short-term. One-year notes, bond anticipation notes and long-term financing. So, so before we get into a little bit of the details, there are just three main factors I think that um, we need to explore a little bit or just be aware of. Be, before we actually see what the impact is. And if you go to the next page, uh, Lisa, uh, there's a chart of where interest rates are. Now, this, this chart is kind of busy, uh, but the story here is, uh, this is a graph of the ten-year U S Treasury bond. It's a benchmark for long-term borrowing costs. It goes back about over fifty years. You can see that green circle on the left-hand side there is when interest rates peaked in nineteen eighty-one. Since then, they've been going uh, down. They bottomed out in March of twenty twenty, which is, and you see that green arrow on the right-hand side. But, but since twenty twenty, they have actually come up. Um, so, so they're nowhere near where they were in their early eighties. Uh, but they have come up from their all-time lows of below one percent. They're now at around four percent. So that's quite an impact uh, over just one year. So just something to be. So that's quite an impact over just one year. So just something to be aware of, this could have a negative impact on 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 the town's debt borrowing if interest rates continue to rise. So this is long term. If you go to the next chart, it it's a graph that shows the short term borrowing cost. And again, we we're concerned about this is often issues, we don't issue bonds every year. Some years we issue bond anticipation notes to get money in the bank and to to start working on the projects before they're actually permanently financed. If you look at the left hand side of this graph, you see short term rates for the last several years were close to zero. It was free money. So so even that short term note that's out there for the the school project that that the town is waiting for the grant from the state of Connecticut, that cost for keeping those bands in the past was very, very low. But now you can see since the beginning of last year, a steep increase in short term borrowing costs. So so by doing these bands, waiting for that state grant to come, it's going to put more and more pressure on this debt plan. So we just have to keep an eye on that. And hopefully they they start to level off a little bit here. So we looked at long term rates, this is short term rates. If you go to the next slide, we we see what's called the the yield curve. Now, this this red line on the bottom is where interest rates were about a year ago. Short term rates, which is on the left hand side, was low, and then they gradually went up as you went out farther. But where are they now is this blue line? The Federal Reserve trying to attempt to control inflation, controls short term rates. So you could see on the short end of this yield curve, dramatic increase in short term borrowing costs from about zero up to over four and a half percent. And it's very strange, this blue line shows you that today the yield curve is inverted, meaning it costs you more to borrow on a short term basis than it does on a long term basis. Which is very, very strange when you see something like that. It usually implies that the market thinks there's a chance for a recession. Uh, the downside to this to the town is again, those short term borrowing costs are going to be much more more expensive than they have been in the past. And even the long term rates are going to be more expensive than they were, not to the same degree as short term rates. So these are some headwinds that we have to be aware of. So that's interest rates. If you go on to the next chart, the second component, so we looked at interest rates. Unfortunately, they're not going the right way. The second component is the bond rating. Now, this is a very positive story. It always has been. Congratulations to the town and to Lisa, the finance director. The town has the highest possible bond rating from both Standard and Poor's and Fitch. It's a triple A level. Now, just like all of us, we have a credit score. The higher our credit score, the lower our borrowing costs, the same with the town. The higher your borrowing, the higher your bond rating, the lower your borrowing cost. So the town has a a great management team, a lot of fiscal discipline, and that's reflected in that triple A rating. Now, what factors go into determining that rate? Uh, just quickly, if you go to the next page, Lisa, we see there's basically five factors. Management practices and the economy and demographics, financial performance, debt management and long term liabilities. I I circled both management practices and financial performance. To go combined, they're about fifty percent of your rating. The town, I think, has one of the highest management scores of Standard and Poor's ratings throughout the nation. So basically, all the towns adopted policies and procedures, their discipline in budgeting is is reflected. And I think that that's why talent, frankly, the demographics are strong, but they're not as strong as as they are in, say, a West Hartford or Glastonbury or Greenwich or Westport. Yet yet the town's bond rating is the same as those higher rated communities, as as those other communities. So congratulations to the town. The bond rating is is very, very strong, and that's going to allow the town to borrow at the lowest possible cost. So if we go on to the next page, this is a a little busy. What I wanted to to just reflect here is that some people say, well, how important is the triple A rating? You know, what if we lose the triple A rating? And what this shows is for a twenty five million dollar borrowing, I have two columns there compared to them. If the town were to get downgraded, I don't think you're going to get downgraded. I don't see anything that would justify that. But if you were, your your borrowing cost would go up about a half a million dollars over the twenty years. So there is a real dollar cost. Or there's a there's a benefit to that triple A rating. And and any time a community that has a lower rating goes out and bonding, their borrowing cost is higher. So I I congratulate the town again on that high rating, and I think it's something that the town should strive to try to try and keep. Go to the next page. The the third component, we talked about interest rates. We talked about the town's bond rating. And and the third one is your existing debt profile. I didn't want to put a spreadsheet up here, but but the these blue bars that you see here are the town's debt service by fiscal year, starting in fiscal twenty four. So you could see that they drop off over time. And 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 this this plays a very, very large part as to why you could have a twenty five million dollar capital plan and very, very little impact to your debt service budget. Because the existing debt is running off at a fairly aggressive rate. And again, in the past, the town has been very prudent in how you structure those bond issues. The town has not pushed debt out for future administrations. They've started to address it. It it amortizes very aggressively relative to other Connecticut municipalities. That other little red line that goes across is 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 a a metric that the rating agencies use. They take ten percent of your budget. And and in here, I I assume that your budget grows about just under one percent a year. So you could see that red line is growing a little bit. Typically, the rating agencies say if your annual debt service is at that ten percent, that red line or higher, then they say your debt is relatively high. Uh, if it's below that, that's a credit positive, and you can see the town is way below the ten percent credit limit that the rating agencies impose, and your existing debt drops off. Good. So so these are very good metrics. Existing debt is dropping off, and you're below the the benchmark. So if you go to the next page, this chart, I think, kind of sums up the 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 a visual of the capital plan. So again, you see the blue bars, which is the the town's existing debt service payments. And you see those kind of red bars or red bricks on top of the blue. That is the proposed debt for the twenty five million dollar capital plan. So you could see that 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 debt really doesn't push your existing debt that much higher. And the amount that it does, as Lisa explained already, is mitigated by the by the debt service plan, the creative financing that Lisa has put into place. So so this this page here really shows a visual of how that new deck is layered on top of the town's existing debt. And and I think that's a big part of what I try and help the town with, working closely with the finance director to layer in, to structure the new debt falling. And again, the 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 challenges are what we have to be careful of is if interest rates continue to increase, it's going to push those those projected borrowing costs higher. But we'll just have to kind of take it as 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 things come along, even though the Fed has indicated they want to continue raising rates this year. There's some thought that later in the year, they're gonna, they're gonna stop. But nobody really knows. So if we move on to the next chart, Lisa, and Lisa went over this already, basically, bottom line is twenty five million dollar capital plan proposing a fifty thousand dollar increase for next year's budget. And then the debt service could stay flat for the the next two years. And then after that, it actually starts to decrease because your existing debt is amortizing so aggressively. So I know I went through it pretty quickly. Oh, just just some 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 summary points. I I won't read them them all to you. As I explained already, unfortunately, short term rates and long term rates are going the wrong direction. It's going to continue to push, put pressure on the town's capital plan. And these short term notes for for Birch Grove that are outstanding, waiting for that final audit from the state of Connecticut to come in. It really didn't cost you too much in the past because short term rates were, like I said, close to zero. Now they're at almost four percent. So going forward, each year that those notes are renewed, it's gonna, it's gonna have much more of a of a impact on the town's debt service than it has in the past. We talked about the strong triple A bond ratings, which is great. The town's formalized policies are 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 I think among the strongest and most comprehensive in the state of Connecticut, based on what I've seen in your existing debt is amortizing and allows to have what I would call very little impact on your existing debt service. So it seems like the town, from my perspective, from a debt perspective, is doing everything right and is on track. We just have to watch out for where interest rates are going. So that that concludes the presentation. Hopefully, I didn't talk too long, but if there's any questions or can anyone has, I'd be more than willing to try and address it.
Anything? Maybe this time. All right, so actually go back to the other schedule. Okay, that's that's the schedule, remainder of the budget schedule will be important upcoming dates. Obviously, Dr. Bull will have the his budget over to our office by Monday and a couple of big meetings coming up in this month, including the joint meeting. And then we move into March and April, and then hopefully a referendum in May, and hopefully that goes well, fingers crossed. Let's stay positive. And that said, does anyone have any questions?
More questions, actually, I'll answer, I'll ask one quick, because Counselor Khan couldn't be here, because maybe directed towards Chief like Towers. Refurbishing tanker one forty, what will be the lifespan on a new vehicle? And is it worth buying a new one with that five hundred thousand dollar quote in twenty twenty three dollars?
So I bought both of those tankers back in two thousand. I bought it for two hundred thousand dollars base. They haven't been refurbished yet. You'll be able to push another fifteen, eighteen years out of it. So the last quote that I got, the prices are rising. That's why there's an increase from year before. The last quote I got was one hundred and thirty five thousand. So by the time we started, we figured the prices are still going against some clutch room. There's also the type of apparatus that the, you don't know what's underneath the straddles, the take. If you were to purchase a new one, you're probably looking at probably five hundred thousand dollars. If not higher, because one truck that I just got a price on last month went up thirty seven thousand dollars in thirty days.
And it would be another twenty years before you
Yeah, so all those numbers that are there were, we'd have to relook as we move forward and working closely with Mr. with town manager.
And then Brian, one quick question regarding crandles. I know back in the twenty seventeen, there was potential that the large Metacreme Foundation, I don't, I don't know, there's any updates with that. I'm certainly in favor of the the stain being done, but are there any concerns with the foundation?
Anything about that?
There was a we looked at Building Official and I went out along with Robert Nika and Pete Staba in school. We visited all the schools, all the town buildings. The big concern out there was that a lot of the work was done on a volunteer basis. Some of the peers were set in the wrong places, but we went through and we 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 put in all kinds of embracing. We studied or made everything sturdy again, addressed all the issues, building it to a new blessing. If there's really no difference in the senior centers, senior center looked like it might have some areas where the concrete was crumbling, but there hasn't been any further deterioration.
In my travels, I went with Bruce and looked at it. We didn't see anything again, unless there was something, that's why I asked. Aside from a lot of storage under there. Best way to put it. No, it looked fine.
Okay. All right, that's it for me for now. So I'll open the floor to any questions from council members, and we'll start with Councilman Uchek and Councilman Uchia. Or do you want to open the public hearing? Um, sure, yeah. I'll give you a motion to open the public here. There are seconds. All is in favor, actually, of the roll call, because councillor Luba is at home. So Councilman Murray. By Shereen, hi, Councilman Uchia. Councilman Uchek. Councillor Luba.
Aye.
And I have an aye, so that is unanimous. The public hearing is now open. Uh, so if there's actually anybody from the public would like to speak or provide any questions regarding the capital budget, now be a time to do so. If you're in the audience, you can approach the table and state your name and address. If you're on Zoom, you can star nine or the raise hand function. Right, going once. Going twice. All right, three times. You can a motion to close the ball hearing?
Don't move.
All right, so my councillor, Uchia, second by councillor Luba. Roll call vote. Councilman Uchek. Councilman Uchia. By Shereen, I, councillor Murray. Councillor Luba.
Aye.
I have an aye, so it's unanimous. The hearing is closed, and now we'll open the floor to your questions.
My opinions are all over the place. Thank you, everyone. So in your work for our town. I remember a joint meeting with the historic district in the Commission on People with Disabilities and mentioned about putting some money or start planning to use capital money for the ADA in the green. I don't see any mention of that in here at all.
The ADA aspect of the green, as well as the ADA and disabled veterans access to the veteran monument there has gone to Chuck for engineering estimate. Uh, he's prepared to draw up a plan. He's given us an estimate and my plan is to submit that through ARPA funding.
The entire thing?
We'll look at the number.
I just was hoping it would have at least been in here, so we
Kind of jumped up. We just, we just had our first initial meeting on it last week here.
Okay.
Uh, so it didn't run with the schedule, and I meet with the historic commission on Thursday. Um, so we're we're just in the, we, it just started.
Okay. And then I know we're pushing out the turf field a few years. Is there anybody who can move something up? Like, Chief like Towers trucks or something, it really needs it.
So
I'm sorry.
So I understood. I have to lean on Lisa in her expertise on how to best manage the money and what we spend. Basically, we've provided, she has a list of everything that we want here in this capital plan. Uh, and she suggests to move it forward. Lisa, do you have anything to add to that?
No, I mean, if if there's anything that's decided upon that you want to change things around, change your then we take a look at where you want to move it to, and we redo the debt management plan to see what the impact would be on the budget. Currently, the way we have it set up right now would have the the most minimal impact. Again, we'd have to see what you decide to move around, what the cost of it is, and we'll go from there. Has it already been moved out from the other one to your field though?
You've you should sit in on year four as we speak.
Yes, the, you're talking about the chair. Maybe this one's a really old one from December, that's the, yeah, the original. So, okay. That's just because I think you mentioned the apartments going up and everything and just maybe I'd like go on like you might need something a little sooner depending how quickly those buildings go on and help it fast that occupancy bills right in there. And then I'm just jumping around. Yeah, the three the three offer things, obviously, you haven't come to council, but I'm just but that's all I have quickly off the top of my notes here. It was just my big question was the ADA, because I thought for sure that would have been in here somewhere.
I have a lot more questions in there. Um, a couple of things first with the ADA, I agree with Colleen. I'm a little, I'm a little disappointed we don't have something in here, even if the assumption is that it's going to be ARPA money to put it in other funded. Um, we've been kicking that can for far too long, and I think we need to just commit. It's going to be in here at some point in the next year. And it can go into the other funding lines, so we don't have to bond for it. Uh, no idea how much it's going to be, right? We don't know that. So even if we took a swag at it and put something in, I think that would better be better than nothing, especially because we've gotten so much feedback from the community on the need for this. So that would be one of my questions. My other, that's more a statement than a question. Uh, my first question is, in the general enforcement WPCA, do you know what the balance is in there, Lisa? I thought we met the max, the balance. I don't know why we're still doing a hundred thousand dollars in there. I really like that one. I'm
I'm I'm sorry, say that again.
The WPCA, the water, hundred thousand.
Right, we're, the the payment is a hundred and sixty, I'm going to round it up, a hundred and sixty five thousand per year. So what we're doing is phasing in the general fund payment for that by using some money that we had received in capital.
I I know what it, I I didn't, I wasn't connecting. I thought that was something. I I hear you.
You're okay?
Yep, yep. I thought that was the money that we were putting into the when we were building up the balance of the the water commission.
Nope.
Okay. I I on my phone, I don't have my computer, and I was looking at the questions that Katie sent, which I think these you need to make, you need to put these in the public record, and we need to if this special is going to have answers to it, but one of the questions she had is the question that I've had for a while, like this, the TIS modular roof. If this special is going to have answers to it, but one of the questions she had is the question that I've had for a while, like this, the TIS modular roof. Twenty-five thousand dollars for a closet, um, you know, we just have a brand new school, we've got all these schools. The enrollment and everything, I have a really hard time with forty-five thousand dollars. For a roof on a building that is literally a storage shed. So I'm wondering if there's any. How do we get rid of this building? It's ancient, it's not going to be used for any kind of school use. In any future that I can see, if we're not getting up to three thousand again, when we needed it, at least not in the next five years.
So we need to consider storing down the property, I would assume on one of our school properties. For this stuff, and then paying for removal of the buildings as well. Uh, those types of things. Doctor Will, do you have anything else to add?
Yeah, I mean, it's on a wetland, you're probably going to pay more for the removal than you pay for the roof. It's seventy-five thousand square feet, which you can use extensively, you can't use the TIS basement for the access fifteen hundred square feet. And full of custodial supplies. I mean, I can, so I mean, it's used for the science department, the curriculum department, the IT department, the facilities department. Youth services uses it, theater group uses it, project graduation uses it, um, it was inspected in twenty-seven, in good shape. Um, you know, the, the, probably costs more to get rid of them, and it's, it's in good shape, and we use it fully. So I mean, unless, you know, you have a lot of other facilities in town, you wouldn't get rid of the one that, you know, the trucks are. And you need to replace the roof on it, this is full of stuff, and it's used for the community and the school. So, I don't know where we would put all this stuff, I don't know if you have a basement big enough, Daniel, but we can bring it over to your house if you want. I know you give a lot to the community.
For forty-five thousand dollars, like if I would build something, but.
Yeah, I think it's on the wetlands there, so probably would cost almost as much to remove.
Yeah, I'm glad you wrapped that up, because I was curious, I went, I had G A classes in there growing up, and.
Yeah.
I, I think, my recollection of what they said it was going to be removed, like that it was only, it was truly.
Temporary, the same with the ones that were behind the old high school, yeah, yeah. And, and we had the population for the rooms then. So it's just a concern. Um, on the town admin vehicle reserve, it says that amount covers ten vehicles. And three border bed vehicles, which ten vehicles are we depreciating?
Those are our town vehicles, like the ones we got parked out on the side. In time to likely, those vehicles. So, Lisa, do you want to identify those a little more? Thank you.
Sure, um, actually, in the, um. Plan that we shared with you in December. On, if you go to the administrative services page or the administration page. You'll see a list of all the vehicles that are, are included in there. Um, they include the, um, the public works director. Now, let me caveat this first with that, not every one of those vehicles are replaced with a brand new vehicle. There's maybe three of them. That will get replaced. And what will happen is that they will be passed down to the, um, the other users within the system. So usually what happens is the public works director vehicle gets passed down into the fleet. The, um, uh, building inspector's vehicle gets passed down. And I think those are the only two at this point. It used to be the town managers was passed on, but we got rid of that vehicle. Um, when we changed to the, um. Town manager not having a vehicle anymore. So the rest of the vehicles that are in there, they're listed in there. But again, they're not all bought brand new, it's, it's used vehicles being passed down after they've been used anywhere from five. To seven years when, when they're replaced. So it, and I'm trying to think from memory here, it includes the public works director, the building inspector. There's one pool car that every department shares, including the fire department. We have the, um. Trying to think what else is in there.
The assessor, the assessor has a, a.
The assessor uses.
Community development.
Recreation.
Recreation.
Elderly has a van, a fire marshal, and a fire chief.
Right, thank you.
Mine's new this year.
And, and yes, the, uh, the fire chief and fire marshals also get replaced. And, um, the fire chief was new last year, whereas in, in the past. The association, um, the private association used to help fund the chief for the, the vehicle for the chief. And as a funding mechanism, they are no longer going to be doing that, so we had to. Add it to our budget to start scheduling for the replacement of his vehicle. Again, that will, once his vehicle's replaced, the one that he has currently will get, depending on. What happens with the association, it will get passed down to. Other users within the department, they'll get rid of the older vehicles, but chief, you can comment on that if, if there's a question.
So we're depreciating fifty-four thousand dollars a year for ten vehicles.
Right, but that includes the chief, the fire marshal, the building inspector. And the, um. Public works director. So the, the rest of them are pretty much fully depreciated at this point. And, um, this is to replace those other vehicles, and then, like I said. They'll get passed down to the others that are in that ten, ten car fleet.
Do we still need ten fleet vehicles sitting here? And I know but, but four or five of them are take home cars, but.
I could say that every, every one of those vehicles are used, and there's times that. Um, there's not a pool car available, um, to be used when it's needed. I mean, there's been several occasions. That we've, we've had a habit, and there's just too much demand for that one vehicle that's available for everybody. The others, you have the assessor out in the field all the time, he does not take the vehicle home, it stays on the premises. You have the, um. The assessor, the, the, that one, the public works director, he's out in the field on call all the time. The building inspector, that, that's an agreement. That, um. Was made with him, again, he is out in the field all the time, or on call coming in. Fires, things like that. And, um. Brian, can you re, tell me what the other vehicles are that I'm missing again?
You're, you're not, the only, look at, I guess the only place, Tim, Tammy, that there were, then, when you look at the list, we considered fact. Would be the, um, pool vehicles, um, and, you know, like. The song. Morning runs out all the time, of course, uh, people run to the senior center back and forth, and I know we have the van, but they use cars for other things. Uh, Beth and, and her staff run out, um, the cars get used, um. Look at, we can get rid of all the cars, um, it's just, you know, what do we, I think it's responsible, let me put it that way. Um, on the eye test and watching what goes on, uh, in this facility and with our staff. You know, there's certain times I look around and say, well, you know, this department has a lot, and I want to dig in on it, and as I have shown, I don't think that would be one of them, but. Obviously up to your discretion.
Okey dokey, um, the old Stafford's, uh, the old Stafford transfer station. You mentioned what you guys were using that for, and you mentioned something about a possible solar farm there.
You betcha.
Is that considered a brownfield?
Uh, we're working through deep to get the grant, uh, or some, some monies through that, yeah, Megan's working through all that, absolutely, a brownfield, yeah. Uh, most importantly, is we researched, was it closed properly back in the seventy or eighties, and, and it was.
It was, but, yeah, it's got a lot of contamination in it, that's why I'm asking if it's a brown.
It is, it is a brownfield, yeah, and, but I believe that opens us up to some grants, uh, as well.
A lot, yes, that's why I'm asking, um, yeah, and also for the solar.
Megan's in, in pursuit of those with deep, uh, as you're, I'm sure aware, some of the paperwork getting, uh, you know, back and forth in the, um. Not time consuming, yes.
And that you're being nice, um. I, I had to chuckle when you mentioned the TMS patio, and I was like, am I right? The, the grader that we talked about in year two. So, um, I'm going to limb here and say I'm expecting that budget to come down by twenty-six thousand dollars then.
What do you mean?
Well, we're going to buy a grader at a hundred grand, and we have a contractor that we're doing for twenty-six thousand dollars a year to grade.
Fair point.
I'm expecting to see a reduction in budget of twenty-six thousand dollars minimum, right?
Do you budget in that money now, Scott, to have the roads graded?
For this coming year, yes, because I don't know what's, you know, if the grader doesn't come to fruition, I need the money.
Understood. Yep.
The, the parks and facilities garage, you had mentioned that there are people sleeping in there, and that they're putting cots in the wreck department.
Yeah, they don't have a place to sleep, they have to, the parks garage. They, they have to go if they're, um, if we have to keep them overnight. Most of the time what happens, we back up a little bit for the parks and the facilities. Highway guys for rooms come in. Um, we have the parks, who's come in around three o'clock in the morning, which gives them ample time to get fire stations open. Somebody will run through the fire stations all night long, but they come in to do a cleanup work, they get the schools going, then they get on the sidewalks. Typically, they're not in all night unless we have a major disaster, and then they need, need a place, which is where we send them to, uh, recreation.
There's no, there, there, I know we put bunk room in, in the new garage.
Highway garage.
Right, so.
There's not enough room for twenty-some people in that garage, in that room. It, it was designed based on the number of people that we had in highway garage.
Okay. And for the, the multiple border bed projects in year three, the technology upgrades in photography, Katie had a really good question on that one, too. I hope she asks, but, um, the, what exactly are the technology upgrades, and what about photography?
Doctor Will, you want to hit those? He has, so, let me pause you one second, Doc, he answered those, uh, questions. Uh, I did not read them as I went through the, uh, the presentation, but go ahead, Doc, did your answer.
Basically, the, the old, the, the park around that's there now is the old chemical photography room. Um, and it, no one uses it anymore, so it's taking up a massive amount of space, there's a chemical. You know, so they want to take that. Open it up, spread, you know, get the technology so that you can have more kids in that area, and then use the digital. Use the digital pack in the photography, digital backside, because that's what everybody's doing today versus, you know.
Is Mr. Blaze still there?
No.
I was going to say, he never let you take that, all of my kids that took that class, it's really no.
Uh, no, he, uh, he would, no, no, so that, and the person who is there now is very much into the high tech. You know, and the kid, the young adults are very, that's what they want more into there, because you can do a lot of, you know, a lot of this stuff.
And the technology upgrades?
Uh, I'm trying to find, you know, my, this isn't working right now, so I have to get back.
I can read what you wrote. Yep.
Three years of it.
So, so to some of the questions, uh, the, the projects, uh, are significantly more than what is typically funded by local grant PTOs.
Oh, that, yeah.
Equivalent organizations, uh, that did it, they. They work in regular partnership with these groups, as an example, a recent in Denver, and. May yield fifty thousand, uh, fifty, fifty thousand dollars or, uh, twelve point five K per school. But that's not the equivalent of funding to, to do these projects. Looking more, uh, closely at the technology upgrades, it's upgrading, upgrade and enhance classroom technology available to teachers. At Talon intermediate schools, which includes the purchase of interaction, project, interactive projected systems. Uh, document cameras, um, BYOD cloud and compatible printers, twenty interactive rejection systems. Twenty document cameras, twenty again, BYOD, I don't know what that mean, cloud.
Bring your own device, but I thought we were providing devices to everybody, so why do we need to bring your own device technology?
Uh, upgrade and enhance the classroom technology available to science teachers at TIS, include the purchase desktop computers, digital. Uh, microscopes, interactive projected systems, network switches. Thirty computers, twenty-four intermediate, uh, school grade digital microscopes, one switch chassis necessary. Um, some power supply stuff, um, update, enhance the science technology available to teachers at T A, T H S. This includes the purchase of digital microscopes, interactive projected systems, documents, cameras, network switches, forty-eight high school digital microscopes. Eighty interactive projected systems, eight document cameras, and again, some power stuff. Uh, technology upgrades at TMS, update and enhance the classroom technology, get all the teachers at Talon Middle School, includes the purchase of interactive projected systems. Document cameras, again, the B I Y O D and, uh, compatible printers, um. Cloud printers, document cameras, uh, that sort of thing, um. I hope that's enough detail.
Yeah, I don't have my computer, so I can't, yeah, so the B Y O D, I guess I'm not sure on the B Y O D, because we have devices now that are supposed to be standardized and provided to everybody, so. Why are we doing B Y O D technology?
Those are probably from, those are partially probably mirrored from the time prior to the Chromebooks, but the Chromebooks require the same, you know, the same type of. Technology, wireless technology.
But don't we already have that?
We have the Chromebooks, but, you know, you need the infrastructure and switches and all that to make all of that work, and to continue to work, and to stay with the highest, uh. And they have these, um, updating, uh, frequency standards, and you have to do that every couple of years to keep these moving and working correctly. So it, the B Y O D stuff, even with that, though, people do still bring their own, you know, the, the cell phones are still a major component. For instance, B Y O D, you know, when they come in, the kids access a tremendous amount of stuff through the cell phone, and they can, as well. But we do have Chromebooks, and the Chromebooks are one of the major ways they do that. So it's really the, a lot of that, other than the science trip and things like that, um. A lot of it is to keep the network running now, because we don't use cat six or cat five wires at all, right, but. And we use it for everything, so when we do, um, testing, we do aspect testing, every single one of those devices is connecting through the wireless network. And it has to stay strong enough, with a strong enough signal, and, you know, stay viable enough for those tests to actually occur when. You know, thousands of kids are taking it at the same time, or really, you know, you know, your kids are taking it at the same time. So that's, that's not a small thing at all, that requires these things to constantly be updated, the switches to be, you know, in the closets. The MDF and IDF to be replaced constantly, after a certain number of years. Um, and it's been a long time since we've actually had some of that, those upgrades, and, um, you say the science classroom. A lot of science classrooms of, uh, the twenty twenties have a lot of that equipment, that if we don't have that equipment. Um, and, uh, this, those projectors, our projectors are now in an age where they're dying, when they die, or when certain things happen to a projector, they become. Too expensive to fix, it's not, there's no point fixing it, it's actually more expensive to fix it than it is sometimes, just to get the new ones after. In certain span of times passed, then even the bulbs, getting the bulbs gets to be a thing, the bulbs can be more expensive. Three bulbs will be more expensive than one of the newer units, so. That's, you know, that, we haven't done it for a long, long time, and one of the, I think, questions that had come up was. You know, can't you go to the C F or, or to P T O or something? Um, the grants that we can get usually from a P T O type organization might be in the range of. You know, maybe twelve thousand or something like that, we would never get anything bigger than six thousand, be it something like that, but. You know, P T O or, that's a little branch or something, in that range. So generally, we would have to come to the, um, council for a capital request of that magnitude. It's the only way I think we can ever really get that accomplished.
The last, uh, question I have on the border bed piece of it is, we mentioned the TIS locker replacement. They have some lockers in third to fifth grade?
Yeah, they do, we, during, yeah, we stopped during COVID, did they have them, and they didn't. And get some used to it.
That's all I have for now. I think, I'm, I'm reserving the right to come back, I have to look through the rest of mine now.
I have a question, I don't have the same Q and A. Just some Katie, like.
It was an email that was sent, which is, we're not, you know, it's. I'm just, I, I wish we shouldn't have that, but like, yeah, we have questions, but, um.
Yeah, they sent forward those over just now to Lynn, so they're in the minutes for these, so those will get tracked and recorded, so. But it'll do the same with any Q and A.
Because the, it's the only, the, the only thing, the problem is, is like, I'm looking at it on my phone, because I have it here, but everybody hasn't seen it, you know, we haven't. You know, unless Katie's going to go through and ask everyone in this question.
Yes, that was my plan, actually.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Um, so a, a lot of my questions have been answered as part of, you know, your narrative, Brian, and our conversations. I, I am. I'm also. Concerned about the TIS modular roof, um, I do understand, and I thank you, Dr. Willett, for providing those explanations. Um, you know, in my experience with Birch Grove, for example, I know that. The amount of storage in the new Birch Grove building is considerably less than in. The amount of storage in the new Birch Grove building is considerably less than in the old building as we prioritize. Uh, learning space and we had a limited amount of square footage we could put up for our grant. Um, so I am aware of the storage pressure, certainly from the Birch Grove side, uh, so that makes sense. So thank you for that explanation. Um. The radio enhancement, again, thank you, Brian, for giving us a little bit of an explanation of what that was. Earlier tonight, um, what is the expected life of these radios?
Doctor Will, you want to handle it? I want to read your response that you sent me.
I can give that to you. So the expected life generally is fifteen years. Um, I can give you a bit more of a narrative on that, but generally it's fifteen years.
And how are the current radios, how are they funded?
Um, we usually replace about three a year and the digital are replacing analog at this point. They have better clarity, they've got a range. Um. You know, and this is really not though, for the, you probably are aware, I I apologize if I'm stating that, you know, something that's already there. That this isn't for radios themselves, it's it's so we can enhance the system so we can know who's. Who has launched a lockdown message for X and.
Okay. Yep, thank you, that makes sense. Um, going on to the THS stage audio replacement. Um, I did read the narrative about that audio equipment. Um, I understand that there's. Um, FCC regulations. I also uh remember conversations during summer theater. Uh, that, you know, like the summer theater group had to buy some equipment. Cause some of it's single use, uh, like the microphones that sort of get attached to someone's ear. Uh, you don't want to use someone else's. Um, but what, what is the expected life? Uh, for the new audio components that are in this budget?
Should be about fifteen or twenty years. The ones we had lasted about eighteen. Um. And so, you know, they're, they're really, Noah has done, uh, Noah Fields is is really worked miracles with those things, so did Celeste has did those, but they are. They are in very good shape. Um, so that's why at this point they don't comply with the FCC regulations. We've stretched it out eighteen years and they're there. They have to uh be replaced, but. Uh, I'd say we're gonna get another fifteen to twenty years out of them.
Wonderful, and I do, um, I noticed and I very much appreciate uh that some of the THS. Um. Audio and stage stuff is being reused at uh TMS. I did notice that.
Yeah.
There's like a cycle here, um, so. I, I do commend the amount, the work that. The board staff does to make sure that happens, so thank you for that.
We use the chairs, good, there's still.
I, yes, I was sitting in them, uh, just, what, last week or the week before for the chorus concert, they are, they're a little old, yeah. Um. I did a comparison of the proposed. Capital budget year one. With last year's capital budget, it will pass years two, so. They're the same, you know, for fit for year twenty three, twenty four, and there, I noticed that there were some changes. Um, so I have some questions about. Those changes and I apologize, I know some of this has been mentioned before, so I apologize if I am asking questions that have been answered already. Um, but. Uh, on the board event side, there are a number of things that uh weren't in the budget. Uh, last year's budget that are now in here, um, and I. You know, when, when new things show up that weren't in a five-year plan, I just want to know like what's going on here. Uh, the radio receivers, the band trap at TIS. The audio replacement stuff at TIS. Seclusion rooms and the nurses area, um. That wasn't in the budget previously, so I'm just wondering what's, what's going on.
Yeah, uh, the, the radios, um, they're fairly, radios we've used for a long time, you know, I've used them for at least sixteen years in education schools, but. These radios are more advanced and uh we had to get used to them, so for instance, um. In the past, we used methods for kind of identifying things with the old radio with that. These new radios are able to do stuff that the older ones never could. And so, and they do it much more rapidly. So for instance, if we are approaching a situation that's dangerous, we could launch. Lockdowns and secure buildings from our radio with one button push and things like that. So as these radios evolved in their capacity and capabilities, we've become aware that, you know, now we need, you know. So you didn't, didn't used to be able to launch lockdown from a radio, but now that you can, the question came up, wouldn't it be great if we knew who had done that? You know, um, so that's how that evolved is, you know, it was like, oh, that's great, but couldn't, would even be better if we had. That feature, you know, and so that's how that involved. Um, I'm sorry, what was the other one you asked about, um?
Um, the man trap?
Did you know you were talking about the TIS?
Yeah.
TMS?
Yeah, yes.
The, I thought TIS was in the previous.
Okay, me, I'm sorry, I was, I might have missed that, but I.
TMS, well, I know the TMS was, and I was wondering if you were asking about that or.
No. What about the audio stuff?
So it didn't, you know, I, like, going back to what we said before, Noah, um, I really think he tried, it's just it is now completely failed.
Sure.
And I think everybody who has anything to do with that knows this is just hurting people's. Years and blowing up and, you know, like.
Right. And I, I also noticed that the articulating lift. Was supposed to be in twenty three, twenty four, but has now been moved out to year five, which is twenty seven, twenty eight. Um. I, I know that uh last year, the board of ed members. Were concerned about some of the s- the scheduling of things. I just wanted to make sure that. This change in the, when we're getting the articulating lift was consistent with the board events request.
Yeah, that my, yes, they, they.
Okay.
Yeah.
Excellent, thank you. Uh, and on the town side, you know. Just a few, a few things, um. We see that the pickup truck number fifty six. Is now more expensive, um. I'm just assuming that's a change in pricing, but I. Wanted to make sure if that, if there was something different there that. If we had the opportunity to learn that, hi.
In your, a lot of your um. Follow-up questions, there was uh inconsistency in the, the adjustment of price.
Yeah.
And if you look at it, be just around twenty percent again.
Okay.
Um, and stuff we've ordered through the fire department and the prices have gone through the roofs, be it supply chain or inflation. Or otherwise, the, the prices are way up and we have to, we don't want to. We don't want to have enough.
Yeah. And I was, was one of the pictures you showed us truck fourteen?
I believe so.
Okay, and so. Now that I saw the pictures, I understand why it was moved from. Last year's year five to this year's year one.
You would ask some of the, the truck questions, the, the, and I had said early on that we try to predict. Uh, when the trucks will fail, the trucks sometimes don't stay on our schedule. As you saw the rear bumper falling off of uh fourteen has not been cooperating.
Yep. Yep, okay, and I did hear you explain cost and fire and ambulance. Um. When it comes to the turf field, I do want to say thank you to both you, Brian, and to, uh, especially to the Board of Ed Facilities Department. Uh, to learn now that. The life of that turf field can be extended a few more years, um, I think is a real. Uh, commentary to the quality of work that's being done with.
Director Lappin as well.
And Director Lappin.
His guys do a lot of the maintaining with, uh, Dr. Woods.
Yes, so thank you very much for all this at work that went into extending the life. It's. It's good to hear that we're going to be able to use it for a couple more years. Uh, it's in my backyard, so, uh. I, I know it's used a lot and. We're one of the families that use it, so thank you. Um. I noticed the generator for the highway garage cost went down. And I'm very happy to see that. Uh, no. Sorry, that one went up. Another thing went down, the art roof building, which you mentioned, uh, Director Lappin found a better price for that. Um. So that's probably just a cost adjustment that went up. Twenty percent there. Um. Sorry, I'm just reading through it. Those were still. Um. I have a question about the IT servers.
Go ahead.
So. At the beginning of your presentation and. Years of these presentations, uh, I know that one of the things that we talk about for. Capital items is, is a life expectancy of. Eight plus years. You're talking about IT servers being, having a lifespan of five years. Um, I just want to make sure that. We're all clear that these servers do need to be paid for through the capital budget, um, even though they don't. They kind of. Don't quite squeak into the. Definition.
Lisa, any thoughts on that?
Yep, sorry, I was trying to get off of you. Yes, you can. Yes, uh, our plan. Excuse me, our policy. Says it should have a life of eight years or more, but also has. If it's generally in excess of ten thousand dollars, which this, the cost for these items are. Um. That's another reason why it's included in the capital budget. Um, my goal. Over time would be to try, once we start to get to a point where we'll have excess money as debt falls off. Is maybe start reserving for some of these things that need replacement through the capital non-recurring fund. So that we could. Again, depreciate like we do with some of our smaller vehicles. And start building a plan to replace these over time rather than in a long time.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate the explanation and. I don't disagree that we need appropriate server, so. Ambulance six forty is on year five of our plan, and I, I seem to remember from. Your wonderful explanations last year, Chief, that the ambulances get replaced every five years or so, is that right?
Depending on call volumes, but depending on when you order it, so we're at a. Still holding.
Right, and so that actually is my question exactly, is, is the replacement on year five?
So it's out there as a placeholder.
Okay.
Only random reason being.
Okay.
Is if it's gonna take me a year and a half to two years to just get an ambulance.
Yeah.
Where are we gonna be?
Right.
Five years from now, so is there as a placeholder?
Okay.
And I'd look for guidance from, you know, Brian and you guys.
Okay, yeah, cause I, you know. I was wondering if that was replacing an ambulance that we have currently have on back orders, still waiting for.
Yeah, I just checked last week.
Ah, oh, I hope you get it soon, so. Um, I, I also. I happen to be uh thinking about the capital budget while I'm driving home. Yesterday or today, I can't remember anymore, um. And. You see uh on the roads, like the private company ambulances like ASM. Uh, have more like souped up vans as ambulances, whereas the ambulances we have are. Big truck ambulances, right? Um, and I'm wondering why we are carrying these larger pieces of equipment as opposed to. The smaller ones that some of the private ambulance companies use.
Well done, Councilperson Murray. One of the first questions I asked back in August of uh the director of AMR.
Ambulance, thank you, I got.
Um, and it's, and it's something that I would, um. John and I will um banter back and forth uh in the coming years. He does, uh, John, please provide her uh with the, the reasoning uh for that.
So those. Large or the smaller, little types of vans use ninety percent transports, they usually have one person in the back. As soon as you put three or four people back there in your payload, you're over the GBW. So you've got to meet a GBW.
What's that mean?
G those gross vehicle weight.
Okay.
So a lot of those animals is just do interdepartment transfers.
Okay.
It's just one patient and one tech.
Yeah.
We sometimes do three to four texts with a medic, depending on the nature and severity, which we usually get the worst ones out here.
Sure.
So we also take those, we also research, we. Transfer them back in a cycle to become service types of vehicles.
Okay.
So we get double the bang for a dollar.
So they pull up at the end, when the vehicle, the ambulance stuff gets old. They pull it off.
Right.
And they use. Put a, a pickup truck thing on the back of it again, and now they, and a plow and puts it back into his. Uh, thing there, but certainly something that John and I am sure look forward to discussing as I. Came from a city of. Apparently busy ambulance service that had those types of um vehicles as well.
Sure, thank you. I, I look forward to. Uh, enjoying the discussions the two of you have.
Sure.
They're always.
Myself as well.
Yeah.
Um, it's gonna be a new patio of the old high school.
Yeah.
Hang out between classes. Yeah, I can't believe that, hey, is.
But I will.
Okay, those were, those were my questions, thank you.
Uh, this is for DB. W, in, in your um cover letter, you mentioned, um. Mentioned that a consultant may be hired or uh just to evaluate the D W stock and how they're doing.
Yep.
Has that happened yet, or if not, when do you plan on doing that?
Yeah, uh, so we, as we mentioned earlier, um, you might have missed it, uh. I have not signed the contract yet, but man, it's a day or two away. He, we've been bouncing back and forth proposals with them. Uh, for the last month or so, and we're just about fine tuned as to what we want them to do. Um, Mike, do you have anything else on that?
No, what, once we sign the contract, we'll just, we'll start to gather information, they'll come up in and meet with us, and we'll start, they'll start the process.
Scott's aware, this is not an indictment on him by any stretch of the imagination, uh, this is just for us to have a. Um, you know, a baseline, like with the fire stuff, something that we can refer to. Correct. One resident A says you have too much stuff or you don't have enough stuff, so, um, we'll have an expert opinion.
How, how do you think that's processed out? Processing stage complete.
Right, what is, did they give us a timeline on it?
No, but I, I mean, I would hope it would take. You know. On there to, at tops, I mean, if not, they're just doing a review of the actual facilities or actual equipment, so I would hope it would be a relatively.
Right. I have an understanding.
Thank you. Something else, uh, Councilman Ducey has a question about the town vehicles, um, I know occasionally, like, your chief has had these conversations with a, a resident back in my chair our last month, this fifth month, um. About electric vehicles.
Yes.
And. And so they asked me on this, because they, I brought up the capital budgets, because they inquired as to whether or not we consider replacing any of our vehicles, more fuel efficient or. Electric vehicles, I think in tandem with, I think Councilman Murray has raised a few times an interest in having charging stations, you know, it's pretty accessible. Say at Town Hall and considering some of the vehicles are emergency use, so they're not having the hard stops and goes, they're more within town use. They could probably, uh. Be better use of an electric vehicle or something of that sort. I'm just curious if there's any thought process to. Long-term changing the style of vehicle that we give to assessors.
There's absolutely an appetite for that. Uh, I discussed with our branch person today, um, could to, we in fact, with a vendor wanting to come up and give us an estimate for charging stations. That would be probably the first step, um, in obviously us purchasing vehicles. Um. We are, are in looking at the process, the vendor, everything involved, the grants we're pursuing, we're, we're more pushing for our solar fields first. And then the charging stations. I, I'm not sure the, the savings is there just out of the price of a new. Uh, electric vehicle, uh, but I love the idea, uh. Mister Chair and uh would embrace it, should it be practical for our towns finances.
Thank you. Any other questions from council members?
I have, uh, does Lou have any question?
Councilor Lou, actually, uh, do you have any questions at all? I know you haven't raised your hand, but. Nope, he's shaking his head.
No, thank you, Mister Chair. I've been listening to everything, just. I'm all set, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a few, uh. Process type questions, um. I know that compared to what we got in December, there've been some changes to the proposed capital budget. Um. Are we gonna get a rerun of all these wonderful summary sheets when we get? The budget from you, Brian?
Yes, uh, Lisa, is that accurate? You're gonna, you're gonna give us the most.
Yes. We include them with the printed budget book, so you will have the final revised copy and, um.
The town manager's proposed budget, right?
That is correct.
That's my.
It'll be with both. It'll be with the proposed manager's budget as well as the adopted budget.
Awesome, thank you. Uh, and then I, I just. Um. Wanted to put a plug in for, for next year, um. To see if it would be possible, the presentation itself was. Um, organized a lot by funding source, whereas these wonderful packets. Are organized by. Department with the funding source kind of laid out, and I'm wondering if it's possible to run the pivot table. A second time. To give it to us by funding source so that it's easier for. Like, today I had papers everywhere. Like, today I had papers everywhere trying to match up the presentation to the sheets. Cuz you have to go back and forth there, like, from page to page.
So I I I did the presentation at least two, three, four, and maybe not year one, but two, three, and four, and five, almost a match identical. To the, I thought I did, unless something got changed.
It's it's organized by like, this is.
Oh, year one was different.
Yeah.
But the the two, three, four, and five were like that.
Okay, you're right.
And I'm happy to do that for next year, um, because I.
Look like a pivot table that can be run a different way, that's all.
Understand, it's Brian's first year.
Uh, just. That would be awesome.
Duly noted.
Thank you.
Holy, can I get a clarification?
Of course.
I I I think you're right, I think we were putting TIS man traps and like grants, and we were thinking of it for security plans.
Okay.
Been working on it for a little while.
Yeah.
But it, I don't, I think you're right that it wasn't in there, so I think it was because they had to do the. All the exterior door upgrades and a few other things, and then they were gonna do that, it was part of phasing in.
Okay.
And so that's why I ended up phasing into this one, but I just wanted to clarify, I was just thinking about it, and it was, we think it was, because it was another stuff.
Okay, that makes sense, thank you very much, I appreciate it. Those are my process questions, thank you, thank you.
Back to the AD. I really think. Press the council thing, so I think we should put something on like Tammy said. But another place holder, you know, if you think it's only gonna be a hundred thousand or something, at least there.
So let me take ownership of that. Didn't know it was part of the process to have it in there for this packet here. Uh, that that falls on me, um, it had somewhat of. I'm happy to add it if if that's appropriate. Is it okay to have it, um? But we don't have a number yet. I can take a wild guess. An educated guess, um. Is that appropriate?
Sure, budget. Hey, before it comes to us, you know, it's your budget, right, um, we've forgiven the the capital thing, right, but we're reviewing it tonight, um. Public caring, there was no public input, but when your final budget comes to the town council, it's your final budget.
Yeah.
So, um. You can, you can change it at any point.
Okay.
You can put that in, and and we can say no, we can go through the budget when it comes to us and say, if you wanna move. Like, I'm not gonna lie, like twenty-five million dollars of debt in the next five years gives me a little bit of agita, but you know.
Despite what Bernie said.
Well, you know what, I don't know, man, it doesn't matter, it's a lot of money, love of that. Um, and and I I've been in this council long enough to, no offense, Lisa. Hear the same story for the last seven plus years of. Eventually, it's gonna fall off, and we're gonna be able to pay as we go, and it's not gonna be more, and then we went up for Birch Grove, and now it's still dancing at the Birch Grove number, you know, so. I've heard the rig and roll for quite a while, so twenty-five thousand watching those bricks add back up when the number starts dropping off finally, and then we're slamming another. Bunch on top of it. So you know, I I'm really having a hard time constantly telling the people, but in the next ten years. It'll drop, you know, so that's my thing, but at any point, we can change it, so if you can throw a number in there and put it in as optional other funding right now. Yeah, we we need to hear, um. I mean, some of these other board of it projects, could they? Could we use some of these, like the security upgrades, auto replacement and lots of numbers around, I would think. Well, yeah, those, those options. I don't, if they, I don't think we, they don't, the three that we reviewed, we hadn't brought to the council yet and are on there as ARPA spending already, so. But some other items on here. I don't know. But it's up to the rest of the council, I'm just. I'd like to follow through on what we've talked about in previous years. But it is like Tammy said. Together, we decide.
There's another other artist stuff coming to, you know, the baseball and the softball. Um, have some stuff, it's modest, but compared to. The other things, but uh we'll get that out, get that into the art of folks first, and then.
Yeah.
Look to move it.
I think it just comes down to. Just putting it on here, putting something on here. I think. Takes this. Literally year one. Is it year one, or like six years, you know, like, let's just get a number on here, let's show the people, yep.
Happy to do it.
We know we're doing this, right?
We were doing it anyways, but I'll put it on, that was a process thing I owned.
Yeah, no. It it's okay, you know, a lot of people.
I would say I'd recommend going back to the consultants, then just the engineer before we met with, um. I'm forgetting his name, you invited him in.
Chuck.
Not Chuck, um.
The brick, the.
The Mason.
The Mason guy.
Robinson guy.
Yeah, yeah, before we hit that, we had the engineer come in and had a few different options provided, I think there, if we can find a mid-tier one, that was probably around two hundred thousand or something around there. Yeah, that could be your placeholder number until final number comes through.
I may be a little heavier than that, but go on, that's in the ballpark.
Yeah, I think the range was anywhere from one hundred thousand to like half a billion.
Yeah.
Yeah, so. I think there's a range that you could pick one of those as a, as a ballpark and then revise as needed.
Yeah, I would, kind of thinking when we were looking at the cost, um, comparing it to the ADA. Walkways we did up at Cross Farms. And the footage and such and the price, and so that's that's one way to look at it, um.
Yeah, I guess you could, I'm sorry. We're kind of free flowing tonight, now. Um, we're running a Tammy set meeting, sorry. I like it. I think the free flow, um. You could also just put it under, uh, if you thought. That's why you don't use it, like, it's on a Facebook, then it's a good, she had such.
That's what I would do.
A lot of funding, so it doesn't, shouldn't.
Screwed up too much.
Yeah, yeah, bonding, right, right. I'm not gonna make my little red bricks go up anyway. We keep the red there. They're red for a reason.
Yeah, she opened up another door and you just brought Cross Farms, just kind of went back further into some of the ADA stuff with the Girl Scouts presentation. I'm curious if any of their recommendations results are interlaced in our five-year capital plan, or if they've been kind of, I know. Scott said there's a number of them that were lowball, or low hanging fruit that could be done, he's.
Um, but I, my, my plan was to have them also evaluate the green, cuz they had not done that, and that was gonna be more of a courtesy thing. Uh, we scheduled a meeting about two weeks ago, I believe, SPD, does that sound about right with them, uh, and they backed.
SPD.
They had to, uh.
We're right back to nine minutes per year.
Yep. Don't go there, and so, uh. We had a meeting. We had a meeting ready to go, they 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 couldn't make it, and we'd rescheduled, so they're on the calendar again. Uh, to look.
Basketball team was in the playoffs, so they chose to do that instead of coming with Brian.
Okay. That's fair.
So they're calling, reschedule.
Yep. But I'm keeping them, uh, keeping them close. Uh, and and stay tuned, just big news for the Girl Scouts facility up in town, you're saying.
You know, it was just something, yeah, just opening that door and then also. Relating to you brought baseball fields and upgrades that are being proposed to ARPA, if any of their recommendations for ADA accessibility on the fields, if those could possibly fall under ARPA expenditure, then. You know, follow them with other. Yep, ARPA requests for the ED and the green stuff.
Got it.
I I have another question. I'm going back to the pickleball. Which I'm really excited about, and so, just, I just wanted to, something to think about, and. It's okay if there's no answer, but I'm looking at last year's capital plan. And for fiscal year. Here we go, twenty-four, twenty-five. We were planning on putting new tennis courts at Crandall Park, but we got a grant to cover that.
Correct.
And so that's fallen off the capital plan. Um, and so the pickleball is scheduled for twenty-six, twenty-seven. And is there like, since the tennis courts fell away. Is there room to move pickleball up, just something to think about?
I would love to move the pickleball up more and we'll look at it, um. And that's, you know, for personal reasons, that's where I get a lot of calls about pickleball, and I bother Bruce all the time. Uh, about the availability of our courts, so.
Listen, twenty-six, twenty-seven pickleball is gonna be so nineteen ninety.
Karen Coe is a great place to have pickleball, so. I mean, I'm excited about this.
I can tell.
You, I know you can tell.
I embrace your energy.
Yeah, and we'll play pickleball when it goes up, okay?
In.
Yeah. Right, okay.
Uh, I've been working here, organizing everything, there's not. We're disgruntled, we're we're like equally disgruntled.
He was, he was smart, he he cut back.
No comment.
Are you, you know, get like this, lock your tennis pockets, I mean, you've been having shorter meetings. I'm passionate about a little more time, I should read and step away, except when our German are not being able to to vote, so I don't think, and also any other questions. We gotta uh vote to return.
Oh, yeah.
I know, it's a different reality, but. I think we have our upcoming meetings, I guess I'll, I'll do filler with, this is the schedule that Ryan laid out, that we obviously have in a couple weeks, our. Going meeting at the board bed, we'll receive their budget, which was passed last night, Ryan will get that on Monday, so I can. Hang tight and.
I'd like to point out, this is the thing, the first time in almost six years that I am not stuck at Town Hall on the freaking St. Patrick's Day, thank the Almighty.
Cause on a Friday.
Exactly.
Brian, Brian planned that.
There will be no budget meetings on St. Patrick's Day, cuz I think he enjoys it probably as much, if not more than me. It's been torturous.
All right, seeing everyone's back in the chambers, uh, fifth item three, I'll think you're gonna motion to adjourn at nine twenty-two PM.
So.
For a second. By Councilman Urich, all in favor, Councilman Murray.
Hi.
By Sheregan.
Hi.
Councilman Urich. Councilman Urich, Councilor Lupo.
Hi.
That an I says unanimous, thank you, everyone, have a great night.